This time we'll call the Tuesday, December sixth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Jackson County Board Supervisor Order. Larry McDevitt, Mike Steinis and myself, Jack Willier, your supervisors, Lisa Smith and the owner. Here from the Audit Office and Land Goki is here to keep us on the straight and narrow. And first item on the agenda is Todd Kenny, Jackson Sound and Engineer. Morning, Todd.
Morning.
Are you limping?
Kind of a daily, yes.
You weren't out again.
So we don't have a whole lot for you, just have a that entrance permit for Jim here that we tabled. Prior to doing the policy change, uh, permit change for material type, so this is back on the agenda. Under the new format format, so. But it's inspired everything, so just, I guess, we're in approval.
Motion and a second to to approve the entrance permit for Jim Eric. Uh, entrance, all those in favor, I, I motion carry.
All of the bridge and road work for this year is done, so they opened the bridge, the last one down by Green Island last week. They got a little bit of cleanup work and all that, but the runaround's out, so they'll be probably pulling out this week. We have a safety meeting tomorrow. The for the whole department and then the safety committee is meeting at one o'clock after that. We'll do our first shop inspection, so we have all our policies that we had to create, put in place and train on, so that's a big thing that's done now. The so lockout, tag out, uh, this material safety data sheet. Uh, excavation and trenching and our safety policy, all those are in place now, we've trained on them. So then the next thing is we'll go out to like, we're gonna start up a coconut shop, just do a walkthrough like. Housekeeping or the electrical panels clear, you know, Iowa stations check, just there's a whole checklist we go down and then identify things that need be addressed. And then, uh, get those changed and then we'll just, the next safety committee meeting, we'll go to the next shed and do the same thing, hopefully try and do. Get to, you know. Maybe a third of the sheds every year, half of them every year, so we're at least trying to catch them every three years doing an inspection, but once you go through initially. And get things fixed, there shouldn't be a whole lot that needs to get changed, you know, because once they get. I guess some of the deficiencies corrected, that they they shouldn't have to be re-corrected, put it that way, so.
So was it to speed that process at all, does it make any sense to have somebody like Jayden go check three shops per year or something, or? Go to that himself or lead man or something?
Well. It's popped over my back, uh. Well, the safety, I like having the safety committee do it because it's multiple people from different locations, so. If you have a very engaged safety committee, if they see something in the shop and they're out at somebody else's shop, they can tell them, hey. Do this, do that, you know, this isn't safe, instead of just doing it once a year, hopefully when you get that many eyes looking at it. It's something that can be corrected as it's as it happens, you know what I mean? But Jayden is on the safety committee, so, um. I I prefer to just have the safety committee because you want buy-in from that group to be your champions of safety. Those are the guys that hopefully are the ones that are have an eye for things that if they're not right, they need to say something and get it fixed.
Yeah, I would say, how often do you have safety meetings happen?
Well, it just depends, um, we try and meet every other month, but like.
Oh, okay.
Like last month, so we just had one. Last week for chainsaw safety, the steel guys from Midwest Steel came and did a chainsaw training safety, so then we have ours begin this month, so. There's two months in a row, but that's just because we had special training, um, for the chainsaw training, so. Was they come and do it for free, so which is nice.
Sales pitch, right?
They, uh, it is, there's a little bit of a sales pitch going on, because they, they talked about their two one sharpeners and which kind of blade oil and the, you know, there's, there's a sales pitch.
There are no fools.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and then just as a general, um. Alex was here last week, went out and surveyed, did some bridge inspection work. Uh, Jayden is doing the Form one oh sevens and updating S I A information on Sims. Uh, once he gets that's done, I'll do the load ratings for the new bridges, then I'm talking about the new ones we just did, uh, this guy replaced. Uh, I'm letting him borrow the Clinton County survey instrument just to kind of try it out, see what he likes, he used, uh, Buchanan counties last week. Um, he should finish up, we want to get all the day liver bridges we're scheduled to replace. Um, for next year, surveyed, so we can do the hydraulics, determine the span links. So he's gonna do it all, get all the survey done and then set, and then, uh. Ryan, my technician in Clint County, will send him back the text files he needs to start doing the hydraulic part, so. Hopefully we get all that done, so we can start the the design process and then figure out if we need to have a, uh. A local letting, because if it's gonna be over the bid threshold, then we need to have some kind of letting if we're gonna do the project. Doesn't need necessarily be the entire scope of the project, but enough of a letting to take. Reduce the estimated cost below the bid threshold, so. You could have materials letting, like you could buy piling, you could buy beams, or you could just have an actual letting, local letting, where you. Hire like a contractor, like, just like you went through the D O T, but you do it locally, so anyway. That's what's going on in the office, so.
I like it, I think, you know, the process of him getting involved and everybody working together, and does that mean that we can use, uh, Clinton County's bridge building?
So you're gonna run into the same issue as, uh.
I think he talked back.
The big threshold, it's gonna be, yeah, he's not the bridge group anymore anymore, he's the head sheet and, uh. But I did have thought about. You, you know, having some sharing some, because we drive pile for like Buchanan County, we've done that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but they have their own bridge crew that finishes the rest, so it's a little bit different, but like, if we had, uh. Say wing wall or a buttman piling that we need to fix, I don't see why it would be an issue for us to come down with the machine and drive. We have a vibratory driver and just take off some deck plate, drive three or four pile to replace the bad timbers and and then do repairs. I think repairs is something we could do without much issue, um. Splitting the crew to build new bridges is probably a different animal, so, uh. I'm not saying it's not possible, but it'd be, uh. It'd be, uh, a little, a little tough to do.
How expensive is the plow driver? How expensive is the plow driver, something we should have on?
We bought ours, you know, testament memory here, I think we've had ours for about eight years. And paid. Right around a hundred thousand dollars for it, but we split it with Scott County, we actually own it jointly with Scott County, um, so. We probably use it ninety-eight percent of the time, but I like the deal, yeah.
Oh, it makes sense, it's not something you use every week or every month either, for that matter, you have three or four bridges a year and. And if, if your bridge contractor driving most of your pile, like you said, for repairs. Is all been.
Yeah, we're doing, um. There's six counties going together by a, uh, shoulder and machine. And for Clint County, Jackson County's not part of it, I guess I never thought about that, but. Uh, I don't, I, I, I need to talk to Roger and see what, I don't want to buy something or. Volunteer Jackson County, it'd be, so we split it one seventh, we split it seven ways, but that gets kind of. Diluted how much you can use it, but it's a shoulder machine that basically, uh, you've probably seen it on a paving job, it sits on the road. And it's got the auger and topper system, and it augers the rock out to the shoulder, so you don't have to drive on the shoulder to place a rock. So dump trucks is dumping rock into the topper and this thing's moving along, it's propelled and it's putting the rock out on the shoulder. And.
Leveling it, yeah.
Levels and even. Yep, so it's that, it's. You know, when you're doing shouldering, you got to only got a couple options, you can dump the rock on the road like in a windrow and then take a blade and and level it off and. And move it over and then compact it, or this machine, then you gotta groom it afterwards, so this machine really, if you use it. Correctly, you shouldn't need anything other than just compacting it behind it, so you've got a dump truck, this machine, and then you just got a roller behind it.
I've seen that process of ours, we're putting it on the road and blading it off, and you still have a lot of residue.
It's an extra guy.
Yeah, 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 an extra machine and an interview.
I think we should be that one seven.
One eight.
Well, it's six now, I I'll send an email when I get out of here and see, I'm sure they don't, I'm, I don't know why other counties would care unless they think it's gonna be.
Spread too thin. There and there, but still, you know, if it's a, it's a certain time of year, you can use it or make that adjustment, yeah.
I do want to have, I want to talk to Roger first, you know, that's something you guys don't do a lot of, that doesn't make a sense to. Because you don't want to be like a bio plow driver that you use two percent of the time, but.
Yeah, we used to use the diesel ones.
This one might be diesel still, I don't know, it's got its own engine and everything.
Oh, this is, I mean, you pull it up with their.
All the diesel drivers?
It's actually a cylinder, it shoots itself.
Yeah, that's what Trager will use to drive, the vibratory drivers. I I have videos of it, I should show you, but it's. You can't believe the pile goes in that fast, what takes the longest when you're driving it with a vibratory driver is, so it goes on. It it, we got a attachment that goes, a quick attach to the excavator. What takes the longest is to grab, you grab it, right, swing in, set it. And make sure it's plumb, you'll drive a little ways and check it, and then the the thing that most of the time, take time is just keeping and re-grabbing it. Because we, we stand up forty-foot sticks and drive them, and it just, it's literally like this, it moves in the ground like that. And it's, it, when it starts to get resistance, you'll start seeing sparks come off of it. Pretty neat, but.
Okay, thanks, we have a, we have a chiropractor in the house, you can't get up.
I probably, I mean, I don't go to the doctor very often, but I'm getting close. Thank you.
Want to give me that to say? Okay, I don't see any visitors or citizens there, so we'll go right to.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning. Morning. So the purpose of our appearance before the board this morning is, um, it's my understanding that. Well, initially, we, we, uh. Projected a hundred fifteen thousand in our budget for, uh, squad car purchases this year. Then that decision, you guys moved that to ARPA funds. After that, I guess it's, uh, my understanding that there's consideration of possibly, uh, removing those or taking those back. So I was trying to prepare for a different conversation this morning, but and on the short notice, and I might need one more time to do some research and preparation for it. But I guess what I'd like to just say is if we are gonna have that conversation in a work session or whatever, I just appreciate, I would appreciate being. Showing their respect, at least be part of that. Conversation at the table at that time, if we do that. So, um, I guess that's what I'm asking for this morning.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's any doubt you'd be a part of the conversation, this may be, I mean. We looked at our ARPA funds and this could be all on me. And I'm, you know, I will tell you that, because when I look at this. Um, we delegated or earmarked X amount of funds or. It says twenty twenty-two squad cars, twenty twenty-three squad cars, so when is twenty twenty-three, in June or July? So it's kind of, yeah, I know, but it's kind of confusing when these funds, so time passes kind of quickly when you're having fun, you know? So I, I may have, I may have said, you know, we'll put that twenty-three into your budget. That we are irritating for ARPA funds is, you know. Is more better used in maybe a different direction, so, I mean, basically, I think you're just looking for a solution, and you certainly will be part of that discussion, I would think, but. Um, that's probably on me when we had a conversation earlier, you know? That we think that maybe, you know, this was all preliminary anyway, where we've been designating. It's hard, it was hard, I suppose, for us to designate them funds for twenty-three, wouldn't we do that two years ago?
Yeah, so it was, uh.
Yeah, like I said, I I can't imagine that that amount of time passed already, and that. This is actually for the twenty-three budget then.
Yeah, so we purchased the, you guys had said you purchased two in twenty-two and then two in twenty-three under the ARPA funds. And two in twenty-two are done, but I always hold off until the spring, trying to get as much use out of the current squads I have and get the new ones. Late in the fiscal year.
So like, we certainly need to have a conversation, but what is our solution, is it? That this, is it, is it July or August that do, you know? And how big is the need and, you know, that, that, that's on me, I'll say. Just because I I misunderstood when it just says twenty twenty-three, I guess.
Okay, yeah, it should, it's, it affects the current operating budget that I'm in, it grossly affects my bottom line and the percentage of. How much I'm through.
And not to say that we can't yet, but we certainly have to look at it.
But something we'll have to discuss, and you'll be a part of there.
Yeah, and that's all I'm asking at this point is just, you know, like to at least be at the table and, uh, get a little time to put some stuff together and get some consideration put together and. Uh, have, be part of the conversation at the table, um, this last, after July one, we had like twenty-five inmates in our jail, so we had to house. Multiples of those out, well, the majority of them out. So that's significantly affecting my jail budget this year too, so. Um, so there's other things affecting my budget along with miles that we've driven, uh, juvenile committals and mental committals and stuff like that, those, those miles have doubled. Um, and even just in the short time this far into the fiscal year budget.
Hard to add to John's.
Yeah. So, um, that's just where we're at this year.
Well, it's here, we'll be in conversation and touch.
Okay, alright, sounds good. And see you next Monday.
Roy.
My budgets, right? No, thank you, scheduled for Monday.
I was gonna say Monday.
We have a lot of schedule, but you're not on.
Okay, alright, okay.
When are we scheduled?
You're gonna January sometime, we haven't said that yet.
Okay, I was gonna say usually it's January, give me a little time, we'll prepare some other stuff.
Down and then on board first and then we'll talk.
I just saw, I said you guys.
You want to do something yours, please, there's, I mean, Christine is not here yet.
Yeah.
November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, or proceedings had written by Audit or Smith and authorized publication in the Fintle newspaper.
Motion to approve.
Have a second.
Motion and a second to approve publication of our previous minutes, all those in favor, I, I, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the auditors on this issue warrants the publication of claims lifting in the amount of two hundred and two thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-eight cents.
So moved, I have a motion and second to approve the claims as mentioned, all those in favor, I, I, motion carried.
Motion needed to accept, place on file and authorize your signature on the county recorder's report of fees collected for the month of November twenty twenty-two in the amount of fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty-two cents.
Motion to approve. Second, motion and second to approve the recorder's report, all those in favor, I, I, motion carried.
Motion needed to accept, place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for the October thirteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Go move.
Okay.
Motion and second, all those in favor, I, I, motion carried.
The next three resolutions, they are for inter-fund operating transfers, so I need a motion to approve resolution number nine thirty dash twelve dash zero six. Dash twenty twenty-two for the annual inter-fund operating transfer for fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three in the sum of seventy-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. From the general basic fund, oh one thousand, to the local health sanitation fund, which has spun twenty-four thousand, effective December sixth, twenty twenty-two.
Motion to approve, I would second. We're motioning a second to approve, all those in favor, uh, with, uh, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve resolution number nine thirty-one dash twelve dash zero six dash twenty twenty-two for the annual inter-fund operating transfer. For fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three in the sum of seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. From the general basic oh one thousand fund to the local public health nurses fund, which is twenty-four thousand, effective on December sixth, twenty twenty-two.
I would move to approve, second, we're motioning a second to approve the transfer to the local public health nurses fund, all those in favor, I, 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 motion carried.
And the last resolution is resolution number, I need a motion to approve resolution number nine thirty-two dash twelve dash zero six dash twenty twenty-two. For the first half inter-fund operating transfer for fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three. In the sum of six hundred and seven thousand, six hundred dollars from the road basic eleven thousand fund to the secondary road fund, which is twenty thousand. Effective December sixth, twenty twenty-two.
So move. Think of the second, I mean, what's in a second to make the transfer to the road basic type, all those in favor, I, I. Motion carried.
And that's all that I have for the board today.
John, did you wish to address the board?
Uh, just gonna bring you up to date and we're ran out there and.
Okay, you got ten minutes.
Okay.
You've got the next person, you've come on up here.
So right now.
Good morning.
Good morning. All the puddings are in at the jail site, uh, there's certainly, they did some grading and rocking around building. Uh, buildings up, the steel buildings up and running and, uh. Yeah, he, he, the. It was a challenge, but we got it, uh, and, uh, right now we're getting underground plumbing in, I want underground plumbing in. On that project, uh, I just spoke to plumber and so I'm gonna need to get over there. Uh, electrical, we're gonna get the temporary electrical set up, uh. Then we get the electrical in and I want to try to get a rocket this winter. Pre-cast got pushed back some, but, uh, delivery date scheduled currently for January twenty-fourth. To bring pre-cast in. So.
You set that right away then, or?
Uh, yeah.
That was originally, uh, November, wasn't it?
November, yeah, it was originally, in the original schedule. You know.
So do we need to protect them footage from now until interior that are only?
Two foot deep.
Yeah.
Uh, I I've spoken to K E and, uh. They asked if we could assist with some of that, but they would get it in. Uh, on the interior footings, they're talking about, uh, wrapping, straying.
Or some blankets or something, yeah, I would think, would be surprised, but.
Yeah, I'd.
I mean, I think we have some, like, we should ask Marty, that's basically, Marty, I'm sure we have some like, the secondary roads.
And then, I gotta believe they got a good. Two weeks of underground plumbing and then we'll get the rock in and then we got a another week or two, I mean, there's probably. Four miles underground electrical conduit that has to go in. I'd like to get that in the dirt somewhat, so the conduits don't get, uh, destroyed. And they're gonna belt the rock in, so.
All the weather looks favorable for them.
Yeah.
Is there a star phone going underneath that floor in the port?
Not underneath floors and the exterior perimeter of the foundation walls. So.
On the inside.
Inside. So. Uh, no, it, that's where it's insulated and the floors are.
Okay, sure.
So that kind of brings you up to date on where we're at, I'm not doing any more grading, I got Alex working on the grading plan. Uh. To make a few changes for the grading, get rid of the drain wall. And, uh, probably have to add some curb over on that east side, so we don't have dirt running on it. So that brings you up to date there.
So that slope that with our agreement is won't get started?
I gotta do it yet this year. I think it'd just be a dang mess right now, so I'd rather bring.
Well, it would be so much right now, but it could really get in a mess in a hurry, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so I would, I think we're gonna put that off the spring, I'll clock you up, I'm rocking anything else I don't want to lose on that rock.
Yeah.
So, uh, I held them off on that south side.
What do you mean by, uh, curb, you mean just like a berm of some kind to keep it?
No, just a curb on the paving, just.
Oh, really?
Yeah, just there, everything's flowing down and it's gonna be a drainage well there and they don't want it flowing up on the parking lot.
Right, no.
Plus it allows us to ease that slope more so that we can mow it.
Yeah.
Easier.
But you're not gonna get any business, right?
Oh, no, that's when the paving goes, next year or later, I'm just gonna have to add some curtain there, you know?
So you're not talking about silt going in there now, I mean, we have.
Oh, no, I'm not worried about now.
Okay.
But I want to change the grades because they're minimal grades there originally, get everything drained and to the west there. So I want to pick those grades up so it drains better and part of the south side is gonna go to the west, the other part will go to east around the building.
There won't be a way to hook onto that drain coming off the building and take it to the south?
I'm just gonna let that, we're gonna let those drains and let them, uh, surface drain.
Oh, okay.
The, there's two of them on there, uh, the first two. Yeah, and I went up and looked at it and that line's plugged anyways, so they might as well just take that up and we'll let it surface drain there. The other downspouts are tied over there and right where that building kicks out, there's a another, uh. Uh, another story, drain that comes out there, uh, yeah, so that would go around our building.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, as far as the Jackson County Fair project, uh. The grading, the building pads there, uh. Stickley's working on temporary electric, they're gonna finish pouring, uh, puddings for that to, uh, tomorrow. So I'm gonna start getting the underground plumbing and electrical into that building also, so.
So how far out is their pre-cast?
Well, it was, it is supposed to come in February, so you tell me. I, I, you know, they're kind of lining that up and, you know, for the fair, but, uh, I. Don't think we're gonna make that date, it's probably gonna be another month back, I gotta believe.
Without a doubt, nothing is falling in place in the future.
Oh, it's just crazy.
Well, supply chain is pretty rough.
Yeah, it is, it hasn't gotten much better, so.
We do have, uh, we do have some, our EMS has been practicing or running a drone, but he does have some nice. Oh, putting, there's some videos and pictures of your project down there that we also passed on to FEMA at their request.
Okay, yeah.
For the A O, A O C, A O C.
That's great.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I've been kind of following that, that's, uh. Kind of a challenge, let me put it that way.
Yes, it is.
Life is.
Yeah, that's all I had for you, I just wanted to let you know what was going on, keep you up to date, so.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
This time we recess, we're gonna be joined by Christine at nine thirty, so we're being joined. Bob's and Christine Rutherford. Morning.
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 So this morning, we just wanted an opportunity for you to hear from the mental health origins crisis. Children's Care Coordinator Christine, you've heard me talk about the different kinds of things that she's proposed and that the board has supported, but. This will be an opportunity for her to explain it in greater detail and bring you guys to ask questions. Okay, so just like a broad overview.
Whatever you want to do, yeah, sure.
Uh, because I can belong down this all day because I'm so excited about this.
We'll set someone.
Yeah. Um, so the children's system, um, I came on board, uh, about a year and a half ago. And there are crisis services that we must put in place, and there's crisis services that we may do, so we started with the ones that are mandated by the state. Uh, to get kind of fast track those, so there are crisis residential beds for kids that are P. Was, um, uh, given to family resources in Scott County. They have that large ripmare campus there in Milltown, if you're familiar with that, they have remodeled a wing, um. Uh, on the south end of campus and they will be taking children from eight years old to seventeen, they have eight beds. Uh, they're not quite open yet, uh, they're looking for elusive third shift staff. Uh, to find, they've got the rest of staff on boarded, they're getting them trained, but just filling those last positions has been very difficult. Um, but we're super excited about that, that program for kids that, um, don't quite meet criteria to go to the hospital, but they're in crisis and going home is now. Uh, in their best interest or the police are just gonna continue to get called, uh, these crisis residential beds will be an alternative for those kids. Um, it will also, uh, potentially act as. Um, it will also potentially act as a step down for kids. Uh, if they are admitted to the hospital and they're discharged and family services aren't quite in place, but the kid's. Uh, still not really stable, uh, we can use that kind of going, going up or going down, this would be too. Uh, there's also community-based crisis stabilization. It's another mandatory service. Um, family resources also has that contract and that is where you take that same. Stabilization model, but it's in the child's home. So it's a, both of these are five days. It's mandated by the state. That's kind of up to five days as they need it. Um, so for those kiddos, um, in each county, uh, team will go out and the child. Um, the clock starts on whatever day the call is. And the child will get one hour of bachelor prepare kind of staff skill development in the home. Followed by an hour of a licensed clinician who's gonna do that little bit deeper dive to see if there's anything clinical going on that we need to be aware of. Um, and then again, it's five days, um, and it's mandated by the state. Um, in addition to that, of course, we have our twenty-four hour crisis line, um, and our crisis response teams. So if a kiddo's in crisis in their school, at at home, in the. Um, in the library, wherever they're at, anyone can call the crisis line. And we'll try and get some help out. And what that's for basically is an assessment of the child. Uh, to see if they meet criteria for hospitalization or need to at least be evaluated for hospitalization. If they do, they will facilitate getting that child to the. Hospital, the nearest hospital for an assessment. Um, in addition to that, we have. Um, the step-in program that you guys have been the recipient of for a long time and all the rest of the counties really wanted it. Um, it's a forty-five day in-home program and we've expanded that now to Cedar, Ruskin and Scott Counties. Um, and in addition to, obviously this still exists in Clinton and Jackson. And the region is looking to pick that for all five counties. Um, starting next year. It was already in place through D cap this year. Um, so the region will be working on that next year. Um, there is also direct family intervention. Uh, that program is for the younger kids. Um, where there may be a little bit of a safety concern, um, kind of maybe on the child welfare side. Their focus is stronger on like parent skill development. A lot of times we know these kids and families. Need to go in and support the parent, you know, mom, dad or grandma. Um, and if you can support the parent, then a lot of times the children's behaviors will kind of settle down a bit. Uh, that is in Scott County. Um, this year they wanted to uh, make sure that they had a solid foot. Um, it's definitely for children and families, um, and they uh, have got that solid foot. And now they are recommending, uh, feel they're able to expand to all five counties. So that will be something that's coming into management team actually, that they're ready to expand into all the counties. Uh, we also have six care coordinators that are specific to kids. Um, they are coming on board. I think we, there's only one opening left, so five of those care coordinators are family resources. They cover all five counties. The adult care coordinators were also pleased when they came on board. Cause the kid world is just different. Um, and so they are filling up their case loads quickly. Uh, there is a juvenile court liaison, um, so uh, that uh, young lady, um, Bridget. Um, is well connected to all the JCOs. Um, she and Addie have been working a lot together. She was actually their intern, divorced to a position, so it worked out nicely. Um, her job is to uh, work between the five counties and kids with mental health or substance abuse. Or the really young kids that are gonna refer to juvenile court. We wanna keep them on this side of um, juvenile court for sure. And so we're just partnered with them. So she, Bridget's case load, I think, is already full and they just keep coming, so. Um, there's also a uh, yes liaison, so for the kids where you call DHS and they're like, it doesn't meet criteria. For DHS to open a case. Um, we can now refer to the DHS liaison position. Uh, so that individual will connect with the family and say, how can I help? Um, families do call DHS still frequently saying, I need help with my kids. And by definition, if you do that, you're not an agreeable parent. You're trying to get help for your child. But they get told uh, by DHS rightly so, you need to, you know, contact Hillcrest, contact. You know, your local mental health provider. This will actually DHS, uh, will be able to say, and here's somebody who can help you navigate this. And get them connected right to the DHS liaison position. And then there are three complex care. Um, care coordinators for the families that just have a lot going on, multiple kids involved. Um, we can use them for assignment and then there is one. Um, early childhood care coordinator, her name is Linda Cabasos, that contracts with Social Service. She has already been out making the rounds. Um, she is dynamite, so for our littles. We do have children that, um, it's not uncommon for roles to get booted out of preschool. For behaviors, um, and families are kind of left to navigate on their own. Um, and so.
Uh, break down like an age group, like you said littles and then you said the children's services system? What kind of age group? Does that include a, a, a? So you should go to auctioneer because you're really fast.
So the children's system, um, is. Uh, birth, no seventeen. And if they're eighteen and still in high school, we'll still take them for care coordination on the good side.
Okay, so with that being said. Um, you're working with the schools, I take it? Okay, so there's contact between.
We're just starting, yeah.
Okay.
With the kid, now that we've got the care coordinators on board. Because we do have twenty-two school districts and a hundred and twenty-five schools. And those are K through twelve schools in our region. Um, and that is actually, um, position that will be recommending is a consistent, because each school district does their. Operates differently.
Yeah, I I just like to touch on some of the stuff that you said, but before we move on, but you you talked about when they call DHS, they get. He'll have what, somebody contact right to them. I can certainly see that would be a quite a benefit because. People are certainly reluctant to make another call and get pushed off and.
Yes.
And say, I'm, I'm not calling them, you know, they're local, they're gonna know me and, you know, I mean. It's, uh, I I think that would be a huge benefit just to connect somebody, make the connection.
Yep, and every, every service is voluntary, so families have to agree to it and want it.
Well, when you talk about the parent skills also, that there would have to be cooperation between the.
Yes.
The provider or not the provider, but the parent, the grandparent, whatever it may be, there's gotta be cooperation with that. I can see some resistance to that maybe.
Yes, yes, absolutely. No.
Provided by the, the region.
So, um, we're also as a region, and this is not given Robert Young Center contract, but is funded through the region right now. There's functional family therapy and MST or multi-systemic therapy. Those are family-centered in-home programs. So for the families where we, we need a reset of the family dynamics. Uh, maybe the kid and almost always, um, I would say the kid has already been involved in B S, they've already been involved in therapy. Uh, but it's the, the familial level that we have to uh, kind of reorganize and reset. Uh, both of those programs are also available to the region in all five counties. Both of those programs are evidence-based practices, um, and typically they go as low as twelve. Um, so for the kids that are younger than that, that's why we have step in and we'll have the expanded direct family intervention. And then like I said, for our, for the littles, and when I say littles, I'm talking the zero, um, up to kindergarten age. Uh, we have an abundance actually of, um, home visitor programs. Available in Iowa. It's different by each county. Linda Cabasos knows exactly what's available in each county, but. When it's a young child, obviously, um. You're working with a caregiver is what you're doing. So Linda will work to get them connected. First step is to work with A E A and the primary care doc to make sure it's not a developmental disability. And then beyond that, if it's not, uh, then it's usually. Um, a unique need of the child or some parent skill development that's needed. And Linda is, uh, that is her, her lane completely. She is very good. And there's more to come. Certainly, um, uh, with these services, so this is just kind of where we're at after about a year and a half. Um, getting ready to go into our segment.
Good to see it happening. This to me is, 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 is exciting, certainly is to be provided. It always was, it was my thought, if you've been catching issue at. This level, it's a much smaller issue than this level.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, uh, yeah, that, I mean, we've been talking and kicking this can down the road for three years, you know, whether we, whether we get implemented. And sustain the program, you know. I have any cards?
Uh, I do downstairs, I believe, uh, or I can certainly get them to Linda Bernard. Yeah, but anytime, um, and we can update this board when we have more services.
And we keep growing them. I mean.
We keep growing them.
We keep growing the services and trying to better serve the families and.
Yeah.
We've come a long way since Christine's been on board.
Absolutely. Like I say, I'm excited to do it and. Part of the reason I accepted this position a year and a half ago is because of working with people like Jack and Lynn. Um, and the rest of the management team for sure. This is a. A group that is eager to evolve this work. So we're trying to create our, a children's system of care. Across the five counties. And make services accessible for everybody. In a very flexible, non-threatening kind of way. There's a lot of families that need help that are reluctant to ask for help. Um, and that's what we really specialize in. We've got the, the region supporting a lot of training. Um, for everyone, uh, all the providers, the families, um, in the region, that's pretty exciting.
And the, and, and the biggest roadblock is getting staff.
Yes. You know, with that, you know, saying that too, I mean, yeah, that's with anybody, but to get a program. Like this and just the system appear rolling at this level. I think you're gonna be swamped. And I think to the, I mean, the big picture to me is look at how we sustain that, you know, I mean, to look forward.
Yeah.
We took a real get with COVID too, with the kids not being in school and. I mean, it's just a whole different pattern. School, as you said, you know, you got first, second and third year seniors, so. They're just not, not getting it.
Absolutely. And, and, uh, we're very committed to supporting the schools as well. Uh, and one of the programs that was, um, uh, just approved by the board that we're actually rolling out. Between now and January, we're gonna get them started, is the Challenge to Change program and it's a. Mindless and yoga program, um, and. We met with all these schools and one of our cheerleaders, they're saying this, this stuff works and it's very supportive of the educators. Um, to know that the region's partnering with them and trying to, you know, find these inroads. Um, and they train all the way down to preschool because we have got to teach these kids at the youngest ages have a self-con. Um, because that's what we're seeing when they're hitting adolescence. It's a lot of kids who are dysregulated at a high level.
And I really think there's a large, um. Call for. The parent skill is part of that side too, I really do, you know, especially at that level.
And there have always been. A lot of parent education programs, I would say for zero to five, I mean, different agencies. Offer different kinds of programs and one of the challenges though is to get the families to willingly cooperate. Cause they're really the ones that have to do all the work in terms of making any changes or implementing different things in their household, so. These care coordinators will be better able to connect those families in a. In a non-threatening kind of way. And before it was more reliant on those families reaching out themselves. And being reluctant to do so, so I'm hoping that we see more families more comfortable in saying, yeah, I will accept that help. So I wanted to mention too, Mike, and I'm sure you caught that from Christine's presentation, but. So the D cap dollars, because it's our understanding, first of all, that they're gonna be less next fiscal year.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, so stepping is an example of a program that currently you have funded. But it should be taken off of the D cap expectation for funding in fiscal.
Yeah, we've done that and it, that is a really good program.
Yes, it is.
So, I mean, yeah, I hope they follow up with that when they follow through with that, because that's.
Well, I think that another positive thing is that that. Challenge to change is gonna be available to every school in the region. From grade school on up.
Not that you have to, how are we marketing this?
Um, actually in process of working with, um, the region's marketer, Gary in the T V A. Um, and he is, um, he's.
A news guy?
Yeah, used to be, used to be.
Yeah, he's pretty amazing and even yesterday, uh, he came to the children's providers meeting. Uh, it's the second one we've had now that we have services up and running. And he laughed with four pages of. I wanna do this, I wanna do this, I wanna connect with these folks. Um, so it is very knowledgeable about multimedia. Um, and all the ways that we do that, um, because we don't wanna be the best kept secret. And we want every family, um, in all five counties. Um, wherever your town is, uh, to hear and know about this information because then they can access it. Because we have had a lapse of children's services for several years. Everybody's aware of B S and therapy, um, if you can get it in your town. Uh, but all the other things that we have to offer now, uh, we gotta get to the families so they know, hey, I. I can call for help now and say, I need help and we're gonna get you connected, so. Gary and I, um, meet at least weekly and we email back and forth a lot more between that and he's. Uh, working on a proposal for the management team, um, to expand what we're doing to really try and hold these services.
Well, and it's important for the parents to know, just because they need help, it's not making them a bad parent.
Correct.
Well, there's a lot of stress, you know, in the community, in the whole society today, you know, everybody's working, nobody's got time and. Then there's a lot of stress involved and, and that takes. I really think it's important to get to these schools to have community meetings with staff and parents.
Yes.
And get them all together and say, hey, we're here to help. We're not here to condemn anybody.
Yeah, yeah, oh, absolutely. And for parents, just, you know, like, sometimes it is just going out, working with the parent. Um, and the child's behaviors start to reside because mom or dad or grandma feel supported.
So they do a television interviews here on the radio, that'd be a, a good spot for doing, maybe the two, you could do that sometime.
Yeah, absolutely. And Gary is so easy to work with. And like I said, he's a very talented guy.
He's writing a book too.
He is writing.
He's a children's book.
Yeah, he has written, it's being illustrated. Um, and it will highlight our. Uh, social emotional issues for kind of that grade school age. So, I guess the one thing I, I just wanna mention is, you know. As we move from being county control to region control and that was mandated. That was a change for all of us sitting in this room, certainly. Um, and there are still some areas where maybe we're not real comfortable with how we have lost some control, but. Without this regionalization and without the current system. We would not have been able to, as an individual county, ever begin to construct this kind of a system.
I didn't know as well as I do, I was dead set against it. But the more we got into it, I thought we could never have afforded as a county. To provide some of these services which we now can do.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, interrupted. You go ahead.
No, no, that's exactly what I, what I was saying. And so while our numbers and participation in these programs might seem small. It would be zero if we didn't have a region because we wouldn't have the program. And we do have Bridget Juvenile Port Liaison has, I know I just one client from Jackson County. We see calls coming from Jackson County for mobile crisis outreach. Those kinds of things and mobile crisis is the one service that has been in place since the region started again mandated. Um, and now especially we're encouraging families and children to call that service as well. Um, so that's another service that we alone would not have been able to staff to do mobile crisis outreach, to have somebody. A team available twenty-four hours a day. So yes, there are. There are certainly, um, improvements in services we can offer.
Somebody had it there.
Well, that's actually, all took place when I was the chairman of the. Mental Health Disability Service, um, Commission in New York. And I, I fought it at first, then I decided. Might as well get on the bandwagon. But after we got started, I thought. I was wrong. This is what we need, we have to do.
Any other questions for Christine?
Appreciate it. Oh, yes, thank you very much for coming.
We can come back with updates.
Yeah.
Thanks.
And you're from Quincy, good street at work.
Yeah, but I've been driving between Dubuque. He occupied my entire professional life and all things child care and mental health. So I know all the.
You don't know them all, I bet I can take them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This time we'll have. Our administrative assistant.
Hello. All right, all I have for you today is calendar. Three o'clock this afternoon is a green space redevelopment meeting for Larry and I think they're doing that again as a hybrid either. Zoom or at the library. Um, five P M tonight is a Mississippi Valley Workforce Executive Board meeting by Zoom for Jack. Tomorrow, December seventh, at nine A M, you all have an R T A meeting in Dubuque. That's also available by Zoom, but I expect that all of you will be going up to Dubuque because. Then at eleven o'clock. And the same building is the annual all county tag meeting. For all of you, followed at one P M by the Isaacs District Six Supervisors meeting. Also in Dubuque, I think the.
Also Dubuque, I think the tag meeting includes lunch, so we don't even have to go anyplace between these meetings. Seven o'clock tomorrow night is Jackson County U S. Affiliation, there's C Q I work session. And I think that's at the hospital for Mike. Thursday, December eighth, at ten A M, is a DHS council meeting by Zoom only for Jack. At noon is um Jackson County Area Tourism Association by Zoom, and I think Mike usually goes to those. At one thirty P M is a webinar on small town, big messaging, um, part two from the Iowa Economic Development. Friday, December ninth, at ten A M, is the Seventh Judicial District, um, Department of Corrections Board Meeting in Davenport for Larry. Monday, December twelfth, we are all meeting in here for budget work sessions. Starting at nine, going to about noon, taking a lunch break and then coming back and starting again at one, and running till about three thirty. Tuesday, December eleventh, Tuesday, December thirteenth, at nine A M is our next regular meeting. And then afternoon, four P M, is a McCoquod River Watership Management Authority Meeting, um, executive meeting by Zoom for Larry. That's all I have for you today.
Okay. Okay, uh, early child die, we, we did have a, um. Executive committee meeting yesterday, we just went over the stuff from our um. Open house and everybody seemed, he had some really good reports on, on the open house and the information that was provided to the people that came. And, um, other than that. I was at Iowa Workforce last week for their, their board meeting, um. Uh, and then that afternoon was their training session. Um, as we indicated in the last, last week, I've been trained so much by Iowa Workforce, I didn't need to stay for that in the afternoon for. For three weeks, so I didn't, I didn't stay for that, but we are having another meeting on the, on the twentieth and at that meeting. Uh, they will elect a new Clio and, um, we'll go from there.
We did have a holding trust fund meeting last week and everything, the projects are pretty much all on schedule, um, of course, most of them project are. Planned and applied for early on, so there's about three years now, there is one local project that's, you know, they're wondering about how it's just going to. And I'm checking into that, but. But otherwise, all the projects are on schedule and rehabilitation and a good program. They had meetings last week. I lose a week somewhere.
Yeah.
It's possible.
If there is no further visits, the motion to adjourn would be in order. Then moved and seconded to adjourn all those in favor.
I, I, I motion carried.